I'd like to welcome you to September 7th, 2022, a council meeting. One call of Officers Dee Craig and by phone, Jason Church, Heather Newsome, Naomi Diaz, Caleb Staff, City Attorney Chuck Zinneman, Community Service Director Roger Piger, City Clerk attorney Debbie Craig. So I'd like to ask you to stamp an indication tonight by retired from all lines. Or, yes, right.
Great Scott, I thank you for this beautiful day and this opportunity to come together to do the work for dear part. Ask your blessing upon these proceedings and upon everyone here that we would have your wisdom and your patience and your understanding in all things. And I ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
Thank you, Dee. Those of you that want to speak, your own communication or the sign of sheet over here on the table.
No, I think since I've been about six weeks.
Okay, so item four, approval of agendas.
Motion to adjourn.
We have motion in second. Any comments by the council? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Item five, approval of August 17th, 2022, at your council meeting minutes.
Motion to adjourn.
A second. No motion in second. Any comments or questions by the council? All in view?
Aye.
Aye.
Item six, new business. A letter A, annexation request Lakeside Real Estate Holdings LLC. Roger, would you like to speak on that?
Sure. And just to make sure, does everybody in your memo have a page two in your packet of this one because it might have been added? Yeah, okay. So when I first looked through the packets, first time, I see that my copy didn't give a page two to Deb and so didn't come forward. So this is an annexation for some property that probably easiest to look at is on the map, the attached maps that are in there. I've tried to put them together memo that basically takes what the state law provisions are and places this before you at this time to make a decision on the initial petition of the annexation. It's not really whether ultimately you'll vote in favor of it against it down the line after if we go on to continue on to the various phases. You do have to make a decision tonight to approve, to advance it or not. But this is for a portion of property that in essence lies between the golf course and Dalton Road and north and around the sewer, the wastewater storage legumes. It's land that it was identified to be within our urban growth area boundary for future annexation back in the late 90s, actually. And it sat in the county ownership or county zoning for all these years. And now the folks that have acquired the property or in some cases apart, some of those that have water service that are included by annexation agreement or by water agreements now are before you to request that you consider this annexation. In the memo, I've talked about parcel sizes, what it was planned for, both in our wastewater comprehensive plan, our water comprehensive plan, in the zoning as far as the densities and parcel sizes. I'll tell you that when, when they first were going through this application, they were looking at density to be twice of what our zoning or so say for that area. But at this point, my suggestion through it, if you decide to go forth with it is, is to deal with the property from a zoning standpoint of the R2B, which is a 10,000 square foot lot size that matches with our zoning, our comp plan, our water comp plan and our wastewater comp plan. So that's in the memo. Also, there's a section there that talks about whether you will leverage the any bond of deadness against those parcels. Of course, currently, we don't have any against those parcels, but so in there, it makes sense to make sure you include that. That's part of the state law requirements is one of the tests you have to, to go forth. And then the other one is amending the parcels to be included, leaving them the way it is, et cetera. And so a little bit of history on that is, so the, so the county requires as part of the annexation process that we annex the entire road. It used to be where it would be half ownership, half within the city, half within the county. And then you'd have these issues relative to who's going to maintain it, whose advantage it is, all those kinds of things. And so the road, county engineers, road department and the, and the planning departments have now pretty much set up the policy where if you're going to annex, you annex the whole thing, right, to the property lines. And that makes sense, but in this case, it does, in our estimation, would include four different parcels that aren't within the initial petition that I would suggest that you include in your motion if you go forth with the petition in the annexation process to be inside the boundary and part of the ultimate 60% evaluation petition they have to go forth on. The idea of having a peninsula sticking down with city boundaries on both sides and, and no advantage to the city whatsoever, those kinds of things are the problems that they're, the Boundary Review Board used to be around to settle and solve. Those have been gotten rid of at least in Spokane County. So the process really, we just follow state law, but I think for good planning and everything else, it still makes sense to include those parcels within the petition boundary should we go down. And so those parcels that are included are on that second bulletin or third bulletin on the second page with all the parcel numbers and so forth. So this, this part of the hearing or this part of the process is really a determination if, if we're going to go forth or not. And it's a decision the council needs to make. It's not necessarily the public hearing stage. That is set up for this at the point where the 60% petition comes forth. And if that is successful, then there's a public hearing before the city council where you would take more comments on the specifics of that part of the, of the process. Obviously, you can take public comments, but I mean, it's not a public hearing phase here tonight. It's really a decision of if this petition is sufficient to move forward or not. And that, and that's the calls you guys need to make. Anything, Chuck, that on the legal side that I missed on that?
I think you covered it. I think the suggested council action kind of encapsulates all of what the staff recommendation is. And if you start parsing it apart, I mean, the difficulty is if you leave those four parcels out, when are you going to annex them? I mean, how are you going to deal with that? You're just going to have an island that's going to sit there. So this is the time to do that if you're going to move forward. And any, you know, I appreciate that there might be property owners, maybe those four property owners, I have no idea. But as Roger said, it was always anticipated, I mean, the opportunity to get yourself out of the urban growth area has long since passed because these have been in the urban growth area for a long time. It hasn't been adjusted in this area, I don't think, since we've been representing the city, which has been a fair amount of years, you know?
Yep. It hasn't changed since the initial setup.
So, and technically, it shouldn't change anything one way or the other because once you're in the urban growth area, typically the city's regulations are what's going to govern you anyway. So it gives them a voice within the community that they, you know, that is their address. Are any of the four additional ones, are any of those, do we have those water agreements with any of those four?
No. And we service, I think we service one of them with water, which is kind of strange, but no, we don't.
And then what was the, in the memo, there was a mention of like 85 plus community? I was just curious. I think it was in email, it was back and forth on about the dates and stuff.
Well, I think when they were talking about going back and forth on what they would put in there and so forth, I mean, as you go down the subdivision process, that's something they could put through in a development plan that would be different maybe or have covenants for it or, or something like that. I don't know that it's, it's not a requirement obviously of ours only code or any sections of that. So it's something that could happen through, through covenants and HOAs and, you know, that.
So is more just a possibility?
Great, great.
Okay. And then, I mean, I read the information about the updating the water plan to go along with the comp plan and the suggestion to use the 10,000 square foot lots instead of 6,000 square foot lots. Is it a question of we just don't know what the effects are or we're pretty sure we do know what the effects would be and they would be bad? Is it, is it the unknown or?
Well, the comp plan gets updated, actually, we're going through an update right now. And so, but it, there's forecasts in there and they look at densities of population and those kinds of things. And there's a, and based on our water rates, there's an ultimate number of gallons per minute that we can pull out of the ground and match those, those densities of population. And so so far, our water rates that we have, and probably isn't any more to get, but we'll keep trying, are pretty much maxed at what we can get from a water rate standpoint. And so the population forecasts that come out of that same thing equate to numbers that are pretty close to what our density is as it relates to the urban growth area and our city population allocation as well. So big numbers of things could be an issue or a factor that comes in and has a huge water demand could be an issue too. I mean, so those are things out there that, that we just have to stay calm as it relates to how much water that we really have to settle.
Yeah, so it is more along the line. There are some things, some factors that are already known. It's not unknowns. It's, we really have some, some hard limits at some point. That's helpful because my, my, I was just thinking, I know we need lots more housing. That's just a need in the area. And so if we could solve the water rights issue, or at least the estimates for it, I would prefer to have the smaller lot sizes available so that people could do duplexes and do just more housing. So, okay. That was all my questions.
And where it says, the continued use of land with animals or small wholesale businesses, where it says, where the time they uses cease, what exactly does that?
So, so non-conforming uses in essence is what they become are not things that can be expanded on and large continue. And by what I mean by cease is we, for example, we had some folks that lived down on H Street that had horses for a lot of years inside the San Lemos and those were allowed to continue until those horses were sold or, or they died or they got, were gotten rid of, whatever. And then that's when that use ceases. So it works around that.
Just making sure I'm just, could they, did they, could they have or did they ever buy more horses or was it those, like those?
Those in that annexation, when it happened, we down there were limited to the horses they had.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and that was part of the arrangement or the agreement to the annexation back then. I'm sure based on the non-conforming use provisions, it seems to make the most sense, but I don't know that it's a used, but that's what that was.
Because horses are fairly long lives.
Yeah, I don't.
Other, yeah.
Get chickens while you can.
Make a motion.
May I ask a few? So I have three things. Number one, I also noticed, have we contacted any of the other property owners in that area who may also want to be annexed and are this?
Well, the, the urban growth area boundary is stops right here on this line right here.
Okay.
And we have not contacted them. I'm not sure that they might have contacted some others. There, there's some folks that in the future may also want to annex in, but this is the boundary that, that the Lakeside group had ownership or dealings with and have limited it there.
Okay. Roger, was the boundary you're pointing to is out at the top of the golf course?
No, it's the next line down, right there.
This one?
Yeah, that's the edge of the urban growth area boundary. It does not follow the knock rule.
Okay. The second thing is, could we include comments from citizens if?
Yeah, if it's a point.
Okay.
Until it was a public.
Okay.
Go ahead, Dee.
I have a comment. I just think after reading and research, I feel at this time that the city doesn't need any more money to be developed after the surge of new construction. We do not need any more responsibility at this time, as the Labor Day gives, but not now.
Okay.
Okay.
And then my third thing was, I was wondering if we could, so at the last meeting, we were, we were told that the city would recommend several other parcels, that's those four.
That's those four.
And so we didn't know what they were. I was wondering if we could, Chuck, correct me, I don't know, table this for two weeks or whatever, so that maybe we could contact those property owners to, to get their input on this process?
That happens as part of the process, right? Because there's a whole nother stage where we're asking for that public comment and input. Right. This is the very, very first initial stage. And, and regardless of what you ultimately decide to do, this is where, and Roger and I've had a lot of discussion about this. I have a separate folder that I was looking through and things and we've covered all of it. But the, the most important thing here from a city perspective, how, is managing the city. If you decide you want these, you want to approve the annexation ultimately, it, it makes very little sense not to add those four parcels. So if the four parcels are going to drive things, I guess you'll find out at the public hearing stage and maybe say, you know what, it's not worth it, we're not going to do this. But to do it without those four parcels, you know, just from a planning perspective, it'd be, it's almost better not to do it than to, than to do it with the four. I don't want to put words in Roger's mouth because that's not my job, but, but right now with the 10% initiator's petition, all we have is 10% value of the whole area that they propose. And, and when you look at what's been added, it's a fairly small amount. I mean, four property owners who may be absolute champions to be in the city or they might be dead set against it, never, never ever want to be in the city. I, I can tell you, having done this for many, many years, I, I can't tell you one person that's ended up in a community that I've represented, who two years later said, I still hate being in the community. I can't stand it. It's almost not noticeable, you know, because you're on the edge of the community anyway. And then if you're in, I mean, you're, you're available for the services. I guess the big difference is if you get water and sewer out there, you're going to pay the regular rate rather than one and a half times what the rate is. So there's, if there's a cost differential to look at, you can look at the tax bill, it's, that can go up and down, but it's usually pretty close, you know, county versus city. But the cost of the utilities will be one and a half times for the people outside the city versus one time what the rate is for inside the city. Because they aren't paying any, you know, regular general taxation. Does that help at all with what you're thinking? I mean?
Yeah, it does. So my, my concern with the process and, correct me if I'm wrong, is that they, again, it's in the urban growth industry or area, but it's just that one wealthy landowner could, could influence a whole bunch of properties around them.
Could initiate.
Initiate, I guess. It needs 60% later on.
Adding these properties, and I don't know if all four are developed, I think.
Three of the four.
Three of the four are developed. So those three developed properties will add a lot of value. So they will have a say versus the undeveloped land because it's the assessed value all in, not just land, land and structures. So adding these properties to, that Roger has suggested that you add, will make it more difficult for the proponents of the annexation to get a 60% petition. So they have to get to 60% on the next round if you approve them moving forward with this motion. They have to get 60% and that has to include those four lots. If you take the four lots out, you've made it easier for them to get 60% and then you've hunted and pushed off to a later date. How are we going to deal with those four lots when?
Four lots that have city street curbs, gutters, sidewalks in front of them yet are, now can do what they want.
You're giving them all the service without any of the, you know, without them being in, in the city. So, and then those are things that historically, the Boundary Review Board, it wouldn't matter what you did, they would, absolutely, I can almost guarantee you, they would add those four lots to this annexation. But now they've made it, because there isn't a Boundary Review Board, now it's, it's up to you. They're either in or they're out. So.
And then ultimately, at the 60% petitions age, it comes to you, you still have to vote through that ordinance to annex.
Yeah, you have to, you hold a public hearing.
You will take all that information in and make your decisions based on that.
Yeah. And then the other thing that will happen there too is the proponents of the annexation, like you said, have we heard from the four people that are in that area? Well, they, they'll be out talking to them. I mean, I'm hoping that those four folks, if they're added to this, are going to want to know what's going on and be apprised of the situation and be present and accounted for at the public hearing. And so their voice will be heard, but it's at that time rather than at this time because it's, you know, it's just a process.
Will there be our standard signage? Is that how they will know or how will we alert them?
There's actually notices when the petition's put together and that goes out and then comes back, that we are obliged to do the public notice process to the people that are included within the, in the petition area. So they'll get a notice from us.
Yeah, this is when the public hearing is. Yeah. And there's not that many of them, so it's easy enough to do.
Yeah.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to the suggested council action.
Move forward.
Yes.
Lakeside Real Estate Holdings LLC?
Yes.
A second.
I want to make sure that as geographically modified and accept the 10% initiator's petition date, August 17th, to, to require, et cetera.
I'll second.
Motion in a second.
I've retarded that motion.
That's why I started here, I didn't let him do it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
How about out of votes?
You're out voting.
You have to say.
Go ahead.
I just want to throw it down there.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted my vote down there.
I got you.
So that's a vote against? Okay. But just, just so everybody's clear, John, it's four to one passage and the motion is as stated, nobody read it completely, but it does add those four parcels to the 60% petition. It does require assumption of city indebtedness. It does identify the zoning as residential to be. I mean, I want to make sure that everybody understands. That's okay. It's, you know, it's, because everybody, I don't think everybody has it. It's on the, it's on the, it's on the website, like the whole rest of this thing is, but, you know, anyway, thank you.
Item B, task order 2022-08, Northon Well, number one building, J V Engineers Incorporated. Roger?
So as most of you know, we were working through the summer, getting the, the new well drilled out there and, and we had applied last year about this time for a $350,000 grant from Block Grant and we stayed within the population percentage for meeting the lower modern income. So although we haven't got the final paperwork from Block Grant, who gets it from the fifth, they've assured us over and over again that yes, we can get started and yes, the paperwork will be coming. And so this is the task order to get it going. The other caveat is they want the, the well done and in operation by June 30th. Yet we still haven't got the paperwork. It's kind of one of those interesting challenges to get started and have it done. But this is the design phase for the structure. It's basically mostly mechanical work, but it's the building and structure that will go around the new location for our well. This is the design, the bidding services, the construction paid services, all those costs associated with the structure. The grant from Block Grant is just for the building, it's not for the design work, which allows us to get going and even serve as well. So we need your approval of this task order to get that one going, hopefully have it in operation June 30th. That's kind of a wish, but that's what we're shooting for.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments by the council or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item C, EDA award number 07-01-07525, Cedar Road Industrial Park, image structures, amendment number three, no cost scope in line, item budget adjustment. Roger?
So I think we reported a while ago, and this was back when Darryl was working on the sewer infrastructure project on the airport. And they were working on getting funding put in place to, to do the on-airport sewer that ties into the work that was just done with the Cedar Road project. In the Cedar Road project, we ended up not spending about $1 million in change of the grants combined between the LID and the EDA funding. At the same time, we applied for additional EDA money and they had the idea of why don't you use this money? They're not in a position to take the money back. We actually got chastised last time we gave the money back on the first project, but they're not in the position of wanting the money back. So they came up with the idea, why don't you take the money and use it for the grant you just applied for? And so if you look at this, the only thing that's really happening is on the third page, where, where the project inspection fees are going up by 70,000, the architecture fee is going up by 30, the construction fee drops a little bit because we have this, we're just shifting money around. But this is a paperwork that says, yep, you get to use this dollars for on-airport work at the 80% match amount and all those things that, quite honestly, I'm not sure how that all works, but that's okay. We'll take the money and, and do it. The 20% Darryl has through his curb funding set up already. So this is the EDA portion. So once we get, we're still not quite done with the EDA first project relative to the paperwork on the contractor. There's a couple findings the, the department revenue and Ellen I had on the contractor. So we're still waiting to get that done. But once that's done, then we'll come back with a task order. Hopefully, it may be in springtime for the design and, and hopefully get this portion of it done and built under the rules that they had before for the, the road project. So we need your acceptance of this scope change, basically is what it is.
Motion carried.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions by the council? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item D, professional architect service agreement, 2022-2023, MMPC Architect Interiors LLC. Caleb, would you like to start us off?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we are 11 or so months in this process. Last budget cycle, we allocated $100,000 to a study to determine what we need to know about this building and what our future possible uses would be. We've now sent out the request for proposal. We had four responsive proposals. We went through that as a task force, evaluated those proposals. We scored them independently, came back together, put those scores together and chose MMAC Architects as the, you know, our favorite, basically, the one that had things like the least amount of typos, the most responsive references, that good local reputation. A very, probably the strongest reference was from their work on the middle school project. So they just finished wrapping that up. Steve Howard over at the school district said, for a $10 million project, they brought it back within 1% of budget. And most of those cost changes were not driven by the architects, but by the district changing some things here and there. He also said on, on one thing, there was a mistake, it's an easy to overlook door change of some sort, and the architectural firm paid to not only change their version of the plans, but also change to have the contractors fix the mistake. And he said he hadn't seen that happen before. So lots of good reputation and a great proposal from them in meeting with them, just clarifying with them, the scope of the project, exactly what we were looking for. They were able to really satisfy the task force in his questions. And then they were able to give us a bid. So in that request for proposal, we're, we're not looking for the lowest bidder. In fact, we only ever collect one bid, as long as this is approved anyway. And that's because we're looking for the people that will best satisfy the job. And then at that point, we negotiate that price. So their price for the hours listed, you can see that in, in how many hours they plan to spend on each part of the project. I found that fascinating, just recognizing that those hours represent the time that they're going to be spending talking to our people in our building, evaluating the structure and what we need going forward. And so their, their bill should be either $136,000 or less is the goal by the end of, probably not this year, but by next June. So that's going to actually fall into two budget years. So I don't see any issues with meeting our $100,000 budget for this year and then using some of that extra as well. And additionally, you know, overall, it'd be more than we wanted to spend in one year. But I know everything costs more this year. So any questions for me?
So let me, let me add to this is, is the cost in the scope, we put together a pretty detailed effort that we want them to do because we really want them to take a good, hard look at this building. a good hard look at this building. And it just takes all those hours and time to really do it, or comparatively with another building. And, and ultimately, any of the information we have, we have to have to go after loans, grants, bonds, whatever it is down the line. So that's, that's really what the reflection of the number of hours shows in here is, I think, an honest effort of what they think it's going to take. The agreement, so they, um, brought us in a, um, kind of a canned format, architectural style agreement, and we accepted that. And then I sent that off to Chuck. And they had a copy of what we had for engineering services already as a form of agreement. And this is more modeled closer to that, which I told them in, in May, when I saw the fill in the blank type thing that, that came back. But, um, so this is agreement put in, drafted up similar to our engineering services agreement that, that Chuck has done. And you know, Boyd has, has signed it and they're, they're ready to go. He asked if we need to be here today and, you know, don't see him. But, um, I, I didn't know if he really had to be or not. Um, if there's questions, I'm sure we can go back, but, um, they're ready to get rolling on this. And so, um, if there's questions on the agreement specifically or Caleb's group or whatever else, I think now's the time or, or a motion for it.
Budget wise, would we just add the additional, whatever the money is
Yeah.
Coming to 2023?
Right, we'd have to do that as, and, I mean, we'll have to forecast how much we might spend before December of this year and then put some in the budget for next year or split it in half or, or whatever. I'm not, I'm not sure how far they'll get before December, but we'll know during the budget cycle, that's what we have to add for.
Make a motion. Any more questions?
I have, I have one more, Stephen. You know, I think this whole project is ridiculous at this time. That's what I do. I mean, setting off from the stand for several more years and we have infrastructure issues. We have other issues with the traffic, the road that's going on in the city. The citizens are number one concern. They have to be assured that they're taken care of.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve this Professional Architect Services Agreement, 2023, 2023, with MMCC Architecture and Interior.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Dee, how do you vote, yes or no?
No.
Okay. Jason?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Caleb?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, so you, you were noted, Dee. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item seven, ordinances, uh, letter A, ordinance 2022 dash 008, zoning map and amendment change classification from R2A to R3A Lifestyle Homes LLC. First reading, um, we can move it to the second reading if there's no questions. Okay, we'll move to second. Item B, ordinance 2022 dash 20022 dash 1010, enacting a deferral process for the collection of traffic impact communication fees, adding a new section, 10.28.075 to the Deer Park Multiple Code, and I'm asking you to waive the three reading process. This is a time issue. Roger?
So I'll start. The legislature formed a joint legislative audit review committee that follows up on implementation of things that the legislature does. And they've determined that need to be done for sustainable growth and, and a series of other things, okay? In this case, this is a situation where they have determined that, when I say they, that's legislature, determined that, um, impact fees that are assigned to building permits, um, to, to make sure more growth, more building happens, um, we should have a deferral process where a builder could decide to, or request to, um, extend a, an impact fee cost, in our case, traffic mitigation cost, for example, which is $700. They could ask to extend that to the time when they get the certificated occupancy. Right now, we collect all the building permit fees upfront, um, water connects and sewer connects, all those kinds of things. Those are a part of it, but the traffic mitigation one is. And, um, they want us to, to deal with accounting for that at the time the certificated occupancy is issued, you know, typically four or five months after the building permit, and that's going to save somebody some money in their building process. It's only for building permits for single family homes. It's not for subdivisions. It's not for commercial. It's, it's just for those single families. So a single lot out here, um, that's not in a subdivision is where this would be accounted for. It's a little strange, um, in that they'll have to pay, um, fees to get this document put in place and recorded, you know, probably in the range of 250, $250 before they're done to save themselves $700 to pay a little bit later. So I'm not sure it makes a whole lot of sense, but that's kind of how the legislation is put in place. Well, we have not responded to this notification up until now, and they finally sent us a notice that, actually Debbie has to report by September 16th. That's the reason why the wave is three readings, that we have this process in place. And so, um, it's a little rushed. It still didn't make a lot of sense to me, but it's the way the legislation, legislation is set up. So Chuck has drafted this for us and, um...
We thought maybe it would just go away. And it didn't. Shame on us. I mean, seriously, we just thought, you know, we have this little, simple little fee, I don't know if you looked at, uh, 10.28 in the municipal code, the chapter. Uh, but this was set up years and years ago, and then the statute was changed after it was set up to allow for this deferral because, oh, what a hardship to make. Well, the, the difference is, we're not asking somebody to pay $70,000. We're asking them to pay 700. And so it's a one size fits all state legislative change. And so we now have a process that we're putting in place. This, this is, goes in tandem with the resolution so that we can, we were on the list with lots of other company, and now we're down to only five jurisdictions in the whole state that are out of compliance. So now we'll be in compliance, so Debbie will be able to be in compliance. Uh, but now, like Roger said, it's going to cost, we, nothing's free, and then there's no benefit to the rest of the public to help these folks defer that fee. So they have to pay for it. So we landed on $75 as a fee to defer their $700 for 18 months. Plus they have to pay for the recording of the lien that's associated with it, and that's where you have the fee.
It's 205, I think.
203.50.
203.50 plus 75. So it's going to cost somebody $278 to defer a $700 fee for 18 months.
Yeah. It's, no, it's for the traffic mitigation, it's roadway improvements.
Roadway improvements. And, and the, the big issue is, the whole point behind all this is, are we using the money? And yes, we use the money timely. We aren't stockpiling the money and forgetting about it and then using it to fix something else. It's dedicated funds and it has to be used for this. But they just won't go away. They keep writing the letter. So this is, you know, it, it, it's necessary, and I, I get it. It would make sense if it was $70,000. It makes very little sense for 700. So we'll put this in place, uh, hopefully, and not get another letter, and no one will ever probably use it, I don't think. And we're not, we're not designing it so people won't use it. It's just, when you look at your choices, I, how quick can I pay?
That's a 40% increase.
Yes, overall, right. But if it was, if it was for $70,000, if it was going to cost, you know, 275 to defer it for 18 months, then it might make sense. So it works perfectly fine in Puget Sound area.
So we need two motions, one to waive the three reading, and a second to approve.
I move to waive the three reading process.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Dee? Are you still with us?
Sorry, I had a muted.
Okay, yes. The vote is to waive the three.
I voted aye.
Okay. Motion carried on the first motion. Second motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 22, 22, 1010.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Next up, number eight, resolutions, letter A, resolution 2022 dash 009, establishing American with disability self-evaluation and program access plan. Roger?
So you're probably wondering why these are all showing up on us, and this is another one. So we have, we receive federal funds through federal highways through WashDOT. And WashDOT local programs have a local agency guideline manual that, that us as a local agency have to follow all these various state rules from federal rules, um, for a variety of things. It's why you've seen the Complete Streets program, it's why you've seen others. Well, this one is one that we received a notice, um, the other day and says, oh, well, we're looking at this local agency guideline manual, says that we're supposed to have this, this American with this exact self-evaluation program access plan in order to receive federal funds in any program that we get. Well, you know, we get federal highways, we get EDA, we get FAA, we get DOE, we get DOH, there's lots of dollars there. And so I said, oh, great, that's, you know, we can put that together, get any samples and so forth, because is it a one-page thing, a five-page thing? And this is one of the smaller ones I found from the city of Ridgefield is the guidance on this one that obviously had to do the same thing from the west region of the state of DOT, got to put together a plan real quick. And so basically what it says is, you know, it's things we already do. We are, we make, um, we have a loop in here, we need hearing impaired people for people to listen to. We just spent money on, on sidewalks and access roads, and all of our new roads have the access points they need. Projects or buildings, we reinforce the building code as relates to EDA requirements. We do all these kinds of things, but now we're saying that we do these kinds of things. I'm not saying that we may find something, and it says in here, that we may find something that we can't financially afford right away, that we have to wait until we can budget for it to fix it, and that's entirely possible. There are probably other ramps and walks around town that don't meet the current EDA requirements, and unfortunately, those things change about every five, six, seven years. In fact, the ones we have now are different than the project three years ago. So I mean, it's just, it's, they're moving target a little bit as it relates to capital things. So this is a policy we'll have dutifully in the policy manual that says we have these processes, and if there's someone that feels aggrieved, they can file agreements and we can address it, and it just spells it out and meets the requirements of the lag manual for purposes of federal highways money. So we need your support.
I make a motion to approve resolution number 2022 dash 009.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions by the council?
I was actually talking with somebody this week who is severely hearing impaired, and so just, I was, I thought this was great timing because I was reading through that and looking at it and thinking about it. And I was curious about other options because I, I know we do have the, the systems that we have here for council meetings that somebody can request. However, if we aren't using our microphones, I don't think they would work. And then if somebody is, if, if they're completely deaf, I don't think those would help at all. So I was just curious if there were other options that we'd explore to help folks experiencing that participate more fully.
I, I have not. I don't know if Debbie did when we got this loop system in place. But it doesn't mean that, I mean, the purpose of this is, okay, we may find that we may have to do that very thing, and this says we'll strive to make sure that happens and is achieved via sign language or, you know, whatever. I'm not sure the, the various methods, but, um, yeah. I mean, it, it's not a, it's a, it's a thing I think we always would strive to do anyway. It's not a bad thing to have in a place that says we're going to do it. I think we have, but, you know, it shows our, our efforts to try and go the right way.
And I like that it does give people a process for, for dealing and saying, hey, this is what we need.
So we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carried. Item B, resolution 2022 dash 010, establishing administration fee for the deferral of traffic impact mitigation fees. Roger?
So this is, uh, the resolution that we talked about earlier with the deferral process that will be placed here. I think in the future, it'll probably show up in our, our fee resolution itself, I think. But this, this gets established now in conjunction with this ordinance, so we, we can say that we can reply that we've got it all in place.
I move that we approve resolution 2022, 010.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions by the council?
Is this something we have to go through three times or is this a one-time deal?
One-time deal.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, next up, item nine, consent agenda, letter A, approval of altar claim check numbers 4518 through 4560, including EMT deficit amount of $535,686.40 for the second half of August 2022. Item B, approval of payroll checks, 14752 through 14793, including PFML, 941 taxes and health benefits in the amount of $167,613.73 for the month of August 2022. Item C, airport lease agreement, lot number 18, $10. And item D, Deer Park Airport, Airport Lease Agreement Lot 27, $10.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions by the council? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, item 10 is mayor's report, and I'm going to turn it over to the council attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, uh, the topic I was going to talk about is what we used to call marijuana, but we now call cannabis. So that's the, that was the biggest legislative change in all of the legislation. So whatever we do, if we do something going forward, we'll be right with it with the new name, cannabis instead of marijuana. Uh, I looked into this, uh, having, you know, communicated right before the last meeting. I was in a hurry, Jason was in a hurry, and we were missing each other, and I know that we had some limited discussion at the last meeting on this. The way that cannabis is dealt with in every jurisdiction, you can go to the MRSX website, you can find, you can find exactly, click on what, so you click on Deer Park, it's, we use the, if it's a, if it's against the federal law, you cannot get a, a business license in our, in the city of Deer Park in order to do business. The possession of cannabis is against federal law. Even though it's perfectly legal under Washington law, it's still against the federal law. And so therefore, uh, that's what we relied on, and there's been cases that have happened since then and said that's perfectly fine. Uh, if you, if, if, if they have to comply with federal law, if an applicant wanting to have either a cooperative, you know, which, which is, the, the big issue was cannabis cooperatives, whether they wanted those or they wanted to do the retail sale production, you know, the other section, the other different statute. So I looked into this and, uh, both of those in terms of how they're regulated under state law. So if you take away what the city of Deer Park does, which is rely on federal law, it's against federal law, stop, you not pass, go, we're done. And we did that, and it was really inexpensive. We didn't take hardly any time doing that. It was like, you know, I think, I think what folks did at the time, if I remember right correctly, is they looked at, how did the vote of the city or Spokane County come out on that issue? And it was opposed to legalization of marijuana. And so the council said, well, we're opposed to, we're going to do the will of the people and not allow it, even though folks are trying to say, well... Even though folks are trying to say, well, if you allow those retail shops, you know, there's all that tax money that you're giving up, and they're just going to locate right outside the city, and it's all going to be there anyway. Well, you know, there's all kinds of political sides of that that I won't get into because I'm just a lawyer. So the legal part of this, though, the process, even the process in, I think it was Chewailla, where you looked at what they did. A lot of jurisdictions spent an awful lot of money and a lot, a lot of time wringing their hands over this thing back when this first came out, going through big, you know, first pass a moratorium to not allow it to be done anywhere, and it's a zoning moratorium. And then you march down the zoning path, which is go look at your comprehensive plan, and then after you've had a bunch of public hearings, then go look at your zoning itself, and then how are you going to regulate it? Look at the zones and do measurements and how close to what buildings. We didn't have to do any of that. So the question becomes, do you want to do that? Because I, I tend to agree, at some point in time, I don't know when, but there's so many states have changed over to where it's legal. They just, it's just, it's the, you know, it's, it's happening year after year. More and more states are leaning that way. At some point, it's, it's certainly quite possible that the federal government, you know, the legislate, you know, the, the House and the Senate get together and somebody throws up a bill looking for votes in one direction or the other and says, hey, look at, you know, let's, let's get out of the way of all these states and let's pass federal legislation that makes possession of marijuana for personal use no longer a crime. And, and we'll whittle away at some other pieces too, so that you can actually manufacture and have these cooperatives and things. And so they'll probably look at things like we have in Washington, what they have in Colorado, and some of the newer states that have been through this for a while, and, and model something up in the federal law that will allow all that. And then our tricky, easy, quick, thirty-minute drafting of an ordinance process is going to come to a halt. And we're going to have to look at this from a zoning perspective, which we can do. And from a zoning perspective, we can go through all the zoning processes and go look at our comp plan, go through that process, look at our zoning, go through that process, and find at the end of the process, if that's what the will of the council is, because it's going to end up with you, regardless of what the planning commission does, regardless of what the citizens say, it's going to land on the council to make a decision. If the decision of the council is to stick with the idea that we don't want these things in the city of Deer Park, then that's going to become a zoning ordinance that will, that will, in addition to what you have for your business licensing, you'll have that. So what do we need to do right now? You, you probably don't need to do anything right now. If you want to do something, if you think that you want to do it, you could write, you know, instruct me, go back to my office, draft up a moratorium to say that, you know, just in case the federal government acts within the next three weeks or four weeks, we'll, you know, we'll have that moratorium in place, and then we'll march down the path of doing these regulations. I think that would be a waste of time, effort, and money. You could just do nothing and wait and do that when the federal government, we'll, we'll hear about it. The federal government's not going to pass that thing within twenty-four hours. We'll know about it. And so then we could act on that. So that's the other option, wait until that happens and do that. And a third option is, Roger said, we're in the comp plan process coming up, the next comp plan cycle. We've already thrown the chickens at it. Now we're going to have the backyard chickens to deal with. Why don't we toss the cannabis in there too? See what the meat grinder comes out with at the end of the process of, of the comprehensive plan and the zoning. And then at the end, you know, you'll have what you have. You might have cannabis chickens.
Chickens every month.
I don't know. So, so that's, that's, that's probably, if you want to do, if you don't want to do nothing, then probably there's something that I would suggest because it does take time. The one thing I would say about it is that people are really passionate about cannabis. And a lot of comp plan amendments, you know, they're just going to be done. This one's, you've got the chickens, so you're going to have all those folks. You may as well just load, if you, you know, so you're going to load in, you know, the marijuana, you know, cannabis thing too. May as well put it in that process, see what happens, you know? I guess if you're picking one, if you're really out and about trying to get ahead of this on the federal government thing, I guess that's what I'd recommend. I don't, you know, but it's, it's really up to you guys. Not only really, it is up to you. Does that help, Jason?
Yes.
You want to take it?
So what, the only thing I would say is if you want to get it in the comp plan thing, at some point, you're going to have to, we're going to have to put it in there as, as an item to discuss, because I think you did put the chickens in that.
That's just on the list.
It's on the list. So if you want this on the list, we can always scratch it later. But, you know, that's, that's going to be up to the council.
So how do we get it on the list?
Just make a motion to put it on the list.
Somebody just make a motion, put it on the list for the comp plan.
So I make a motion to put it on the list.
For the, for the comp plan review?
Comp plan review.
I'll second.
And the motion is?
The motion is to add reviewing all the cannabis activities that are legal in the state of Washington for zoning purposes and review for comp plan placement.
Next, city council meeting?
No, no, no. It's, it's on the comp plan process. It's.
That's twenty-twenty-three and beyond.
Twenty-three, yeah.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Dee, how you vote? All right, motion, motion carried.
All right, Kate Newton in my phone because without Kate's party.
We'll feed it.
So how did you vote?
Kate Martin.
How did you vote, yes or no?
You go ahead. Yes, yes, whatever.
Thank you.
That's fine.
Motion carried. Okay, council questions, comments, or reports? Dee, we'll start with you.
I said my case. I don't know. Thank you.
You're welcome. Jason?
Three things. Number one, I think most households receive police, a local police department survey. I've gotten feedback, positive and negative. The police committee understands that no survey is going to be complete or a hundred percent. We're really just trying to get the temperature of the, of the community. So please do turn those back in. That's going to help us to, to move forward in our study. Second thing is Swinyard Park. I've had quite a few people contact me in the last two weeks about problems at Swinyard, fighting, drug use, cars doing burnouts or whatever. I've talked to parents who are afraid to let their kids go to the park, and some are talking about setting up citizens' watches or even taking matters in their own hands if we don't do something. So do we have any plans to, to deal with that?
Do we have any plans? We have deputies on, on job. So now you're talking, do you know, have you physically seen the drug? The problem is, they got to catch them in the act. Vandalism, squealing their tires and all this crap. And it's getting, it's getting old. I'm getting tired of it too.
Could, could we approve for more cameras or security measures or putting up blockades? I know for a while, didn't we have blockades across half parking? I mean, just for a time, I don't know. I, I just, and I haven't seen it. I'm, I'm getting, this is from citizens who are contacting me all the time now. And so I'm, I'm just conveying what they're conveying to me. So I, and if we need more money or to improve, I, I'd be willing to. I've had this kind of.
I'd be in favor of doing something to try to increase enforcement. Since we, it's difficult to do that to the deputies at this moment. More cameras.
Debbie, our, our camera system has been up to snuff, correct?
Could we use better ones or do we have anything else that we could?
Always, they always spend more.
One, one citizen was saying that there was multiple kids, multiple, both genders going into bathrooms together. And that was really concerning. Where's our camera play, I mean?
It's quite right at the bathroom.
And who's going to force that?
Yeah.
How do you know if they're not transgender?
Well, still going in four or five at a time.
It's, it's a restroom that's open. It doesn't have automatic locks on it, you know, so it's open during the summer. I think during the winter, we'd probably close them more, especially when it's winterizing and stuff like that. But that doesn't necessarily end the people of the park.
Our parks have time limits, right? Like have to be out by dusk. Do we, do we cite people who are there after dark?
We have, we have sheriffs kicking out. Scotty, what is it, two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine?
Yeah, there's an ordinance on the books that does have, like Jason stated, they are allowed in a park from eight AM to dusk. And after that, they can't be cited with a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine for the first time.
You can push that enforcement.
I mean, again, this is from, I would be in favor if we need more cameras, if we need more, you know, change things up for a season or whatever.
If you're just asking the deputies to pay special attention the next two or three weeks, that'd help tamp it down for a little bit.
Sure. So that was, so thank you. Third thing is, and Brad, maybe if you could comment a little bit. I was, I was down at Library Park, and I know that, I can't remember the timeline, a year or two ago, I know Darren at the bike shop, he was going to do some things. It looks like that hasn't been even close to completed. Do we, do we have any kind of a plan to either remove what's? There's some of the, I, I think some of the features down there are actually rather dangerous. There's one, a special jump where as you're, I was, I was walking through there, and as you're approaching it, you can't tell, but if you go over a jump, you'll go into a pit. So it's, and there's a couple that are like that. Do we have, sir, do you know any plans to address that? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Couple of things on that. I met up with a gentleman from the DNR. So we walked through it on a fire danger walk to start with. And he was very satisfied with the height of the canopy, the grasses that are there, you know, he was, he was very, he, they had a program to come in and do those kinds of things. They decided, he decided it was very well taken care of as far as from what they see.
Sure.
So when we were in there, I noticed there were a few jumps where they dug out the bottom side to make the top side. And I know they hauled in some piles of clay that they were going to use. They did some mowing in there to knock the brush down in parts of it. But yeah, it, it just kind of fell apart on them. And so I basically, I need to go in and talk to Darren and see, you know, where is he at with what he wants to do? And we can't just leave it like it is. And I mean, if it gets to that point, we'll take our skid steer in there and we'll flatten it out.
Sure. Okay, thank you. That's all.
Kayla?
Yes, a couple of things as well. First of all, I contacted Jessica yesterday and gave her some updates for the website, some council information. I encourage, I noticed there were multiple council things that were out of date there. So that might, if we have you on there at all, you know? So you can, you can give her a bio or some information. That might be helpful. That's more incidental. And then I was really pleased with the farmer's market this year. We had four months there over the last four months, once a month. And they're going to continue in the fire station, in the fire hall throughout the winter. So that'll provide ongoing economic development activity there as well. But I wanted to share something I, I learned this summer in a conversation with a gentleman. I met him through LinkedIn. He was a business professor for thirty or forty years. And he was ready to chat. So I asked a question or two and got a good forty-five-minute college-level lecture, which was great. And I was asking him, you know, what can we do as a city council to help further economic development of things? In his opinion, the best way to build economic resilience during difficult times is to encourage the, kind of the micro businesses, the really small businesses as they get started. And he said that chambers of commerce have shifted from what they used to do a hundred or two hundred years ago, where they did a lot of education and helping younger people figure these things out. And that now they do a different, they play a different role. And now it's a lot of farmers that actually play that role. And actually, in talking with some representatives from there this week, they are doing, they're, they're volunteering their time to teach classes to each other about some of the business law stuff, some of the insurance things that you consider, how to sell, how to prepare for it. And so I really appreciate the efforts that are happening there because that is the future shops in Deer Park are the ones that are meeting there now as a pop-up tent. A great example of that was Rebecca, who's the, who's the salsa lady there. Fantastic salsa, but she had been, you know, making it in her home, selling it to some friends and neighbors. She decided to take a chance, and she tried that out in June at a little booth. So she's getting to test the product. She's getting to find out if there's a market for it. She's getting to find out what her strengths and weaknesses are as a business owner in that regard. And she's got a fantastic product. It's great, and she's been able to see a lot of success there. And I really, just in conversations with her, see that being the, kind of the launching point for her to have a bigger, more successful business that will really provide for her family and, of course, be part of our city and provide great salsa. So it's those kinds of activities that I think we should be helping support. I would encourage us, as we get headed into the budget cycle, they're going to be offering sponsorships. We can become one of the leading sponsors for five hundred bucks a year. And I think that would be an incredibly small investment to encourage them to be a part of that and to help make sure that continues there. So, and then a shout out for Brad on that. They said that at one point, they were asking about moving some picnic tables around to make a better environment. And he said, no, you can't do that because we're going to come do that for you. You shouldn't be moving those tables around. We're the big, strong, tough guys. We'll take care of them. So Brad, way to go on customer service, sir, for the city. We appreciate that. That's really great. So that's the farmer's market info. Check my notes. And then I, I heard today, and this would be a question for Roger, probably. County Commissioner Josh Kearns was speaking somewhere. Somebody sent me a message that said, there's an RFP process for fifty million dollars or so for water, sewer, infrastructure from ARPA funds that the county is looking to distribute through a blind kind of request for proposal process. And you know about that yet? Is there? Okay. So anyway, that would be worth looking into. That was Josh Walters. He and I are going to talk more about that. He, his suggestion was to see about developing intersections along three ninety-five utilities development to help kind of have, I guess, future developments. That was, that was kind of his idea. But there's fifty million dollars that we should try to, or place in the bank. That's all for me.
Yummy.
Oh, my kids enjoy the bike jumps. Just saying. They might do taint turns, but they love going to do it. They go home with some creases and scrapes, and I'm like, oh, whatever.
I'd love to see them completed. One of my kids actually went into the pit. Part of how I know.
Next up, item twelve, interested citizens. Oh, communications, requests, and comments from the audience on unrelated agenda items. Scott, you first.
Yeah, I wanted to thank Mayor Tim for all his help in trying to slow down the traffic in front of Swinyard Park and the danger of the speeding that's in that area. People in the park after dusk. In fact, sometimes people are there at two or three o'clock in the morning playing basketball in the basketball courts. I think maybe if those lights would be turned out, it might possibly help with that part. I don't know why the neighbors in that area don't complain about it because they're quite loud at two or three o'clock in the morning. Also, again, thanking the city council for their activities on trying to keep the city safe. And I, I do think it's important to slow down the activity in the different parks in the city so we don't end up having episodes like they do in Spokane near parks. Because I can see that in the future maybe happening, especially with all the speeders that are, particularly, I live in front of Swinyard Park, that are coming in and out of the parking lot there, Swinyard Park. Obviously, one of them didn't make it over the weekend because they crushed the fence, the skateboard park fence. So again, thanks to Tim and Brad for helping that out.
Thank you, Scott. Brenda?
Thank you for hearing me tonight.
I've been wanting to attend a meeting for some time now. However, I'm legally deaf. I am grateful to the city for striving to increase its accessibility and inclusivity to its hearing impaired community. I would like to recommend that the city consider a real-time captioning system. I understand there's an amplifier system available to hearing impaired. However, many hearing problems cannot be solved with application, it's alone. And for me, being deaf and not knowing sign language is of no use at all. I will be submitting a request through the ADA process to the city. Through the ADA process, the city has laid out with more information on real-time captioning and how it will benefit meetings like tonight.
Thank you.
Now Jim, you understand Linda Public?
Got it.
Is public, do you have time to speak there?
Got it. I didn't know where you were in the process. Thank you.
You're welcome. Linda?
Yeah, first I'd like a clarification, what we're thanking you for, for the improvements on Swinier Park. The citizens that live in the area of Swinier Park have called numerous times Crime Check to no avail. I'm not sure.
No response?
Correct.
Correct.
I agree with it.
And then Joel, you agree too?
Well, it's, it's, and you're familiar because you've done that sort of thing. They get a lot of calls. My understanding is 2,000 calls a day. And so that's what Jim Schultz told me, and I don't know if that's absolutely accurate. They call to the whole county. And I have had bad responses, I've had excellent responses and, and I don't want to put too much blame on that system because it's got it. I've also had some unhelpful people that have some really good ones. Oftentimes, we assume, because we call on something and we don't get a response, that it's, the problem is Crime Check or nine one one. And sometimes it's just there isn't enough bodies, I think, and they have priorities. So I'm, I see both sides of that kind of, and I don't know how you do. That's my thoughts.
Linda, do you want to finish?
I would. He is correct. All businesses have quality and unqualified personnel. You can monitor a scanner to know if that information from Crime Check is given to the sheriff's department and then their dispatchers are giving it to their deputies. Any citizen can do that. What I also know is the city council can request from Crime Check the amount of reports every single time they're given to them and what the follow-up or outcome was. And I think that's a good place to start. We've asked for speed bumps, Plows can't do speed bumps. We've asked for fences, that's costly. Lights off, really good idea. There's a camera there. Did that camera capture the actual vehicle hitting the fence? If so, what can be done about that? Because our cameras capturing events in our own property, on our own property, most of the time we get the excuse, that can't be used to file charges. Now, I'm pretty darn sure that if someone looked at the film of that camera, assuming it's working, there's going to be enough evidence as to who did it and how frequently they're there at the park doing this type of thing. So I'm just requesting that this get looks really seriously gets looked into. And if there's a committee that's needed, input that's needed from the citizens that live right here, I'm sure we can give up a little bit of time to help out. And if there's no one to watch the stupid films, I volunteer. Because I've lived in the same house for 29 years. I raised my girls there. They used that park. Back when we used to pay a buck a day to use the pool. That's another topic. I would not allow my children now to use that park because it's not safe during the day when a parent is there. Two parents within two weeks had their kids jumped when they were there. In that same two-week period of time, a young lady was jumped. Two weeks, just these last two weeks. Now, I don't know if the cameras were able to catch it. But something needs to slow this down. Because in just 30 years, it's gone to a park that a child could use at the age of 10 on their own to parents don't care to be down there with their own children. So we can mow the lawn, we can put in wonderful equipment for them to play on, we can keep our pool up and have a nice place for the kids in the summer. But if it's not safe, my money is not well spent that way.
The speeding is just such a.
Oh, itch.
The stop signs are just suggestions and not often taken seriously. I've watched the one by my house, people go through that 70 miles an hour, they don't even pause. You're going to have fatalities definitely.
If I told the sheriff's department where my driveway is, if they backed up into my driveway and just sat there between 3:00 and 5:00, boy, we could make some money for this city because the kids couldn't see the sheriff's vehicle in my driveway, but they could sure see them go through the light, oh, through the stop sign. No one's ever taken me up on it.
Take you up on it.
I mean, you know my driveway.
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
I will.
All you gotta do is just back up a little bit and sit and wait.
Mine's probably even better.
It probably is.
Right on the corner.
Could we contact?
It probably is.
Thank you, Linda. Richard?
Okay, just a couple dozen questions. If the properties are annexed that are outside the city limits, they would be required to get the water and sewer connections. Is there a timeline in which they would have to comply in getting that? And is there, that's a set cost of about $5,000? Is there any assistance for them? Because that's a cost to them that they may not be opting into or could possibly afford. Right now, in the pandemic, there's a lot of people, our economic, whatever you want to say. There's a lot of people struggling financially right now. And so having that unexpected bill for $5,000 could be very detrimental to some people. So.
Well, so the connection side of the question is, once the service is available, then they get notified, they have two years with which to get connected. And that includes if it's abandonment of a well or removal of septic system, that that's a two-year timeframe they're supposed to be connected by. As far as, there are some county ones out there that we have water agreements with, which I mentioned earlier, those water rates will actually go down for those folks because now they pay more of a rate out in the county for those water payments. And then for the assistance side, there's no assistance from the water utility because that's a gift of funds. I don't know if the general fund can give money to the water utility to help those people connect. I would guess the auditor wouldn't like that very much either. There's really no means, and I know of, to convince anybody to give government money to somebody to make a connection they have to connect to other than perhaps the sponsor of the annexation. Works tend to do it down the line. Or as utilities go by is when those connections will be made. You know, perhaps those developers at the time will make it easier for them or not. You know, I'm not sure. But there's, there's not really a means out there for you to give general fund money away for individual private connections to the city utility system that I know.
And maybe I'm misremembering, with the Cedar Road project, I think some of those improvements were, they were going to pay off over like a 20-year period of time. Could we do that with a $5,000 fee over 20 years rolling into their property?
Well, I think what you would hear from the auditor, if they audit it, would be no. And from a utility standpoint, certainly the utility would say no, that revenue needs to be there now. But I'm not, I don't know if the general fund couldn't set up something again to make that kind of a payment. I don't know if it'd stand muster of lending credit.
But timeline wise, until we get the utility connections there, there's no timeline. And then once we get them there, then it's two years.
Yep.
So it could be several years.
It could be, yeah. I mean, the annexation could happen. And, you know, housing the way it is right now and subdivision that would have to happen, all those kind of things may, could sit for a while before it ever would happen to actually be a service thing that would have to happen to it.
That answered, Richie?
That's very helpful, thank you. So you said the comp plan is being updated now. Where is it in that process and?
No, what I said is this next budget cycle, we have the budget dollars to go through that update process. The county, whole county is starting through a process and it's interesting. I'm involved in meetings, Dee's involved in some of the meetings. And the date seems to get extended as far as how fast the county thinks they'll have all their parts done. But that's, they have to make sure all the other entities within happen too. So my thought in our discussion a few meetings ago was budget money for '23. It's going to take '23 and '24 to get to a spot where we have an approved comp plan because we also have to do this based on the countywide planning policies that are being amended as we speak by the steering committee of elected officials and stuff. So we, you know, we can't jump out too far without having what the rules are we have to make our updates to, or we get to go back and do them again. So '23, '24-ish, before that's adopted, I would guess.
Okay.
That assumes the county stays on some kind of targeted course.
And considering cannabis in the comp plan and those things, should other vices also be considered such as topless baristas or glass blowing or ping pong? I don't know. But there's lots of other things that maybe should be looked at. You know, the topless baristas, there are quite a few of those popping up in Spokane, it seems like. But then, you know, there's like vape shops and other things like that. Should those vices were considered in the comp plan as well?
Well, the goal of the comp plan is look at a broader structure of activities and stuff like that. I wouldn't say we'd be down to the type of barista shop it is or the type of vape shop commercially is. It's going to be more, the comp plan is more generic to the overall, a big picture looks of what is allowed in certain areas. The zoning codes later is what's going to be more specific to where and what could possibly happen. We have a provision right now about adult bookstores and so forth. There's a section in the code right now that talks about where they can be and there's a whole process to get there and the distances to certain types of occupancies and all those kinds of things. It's not an easy task. I mean, the items that we've been talking about from the comp plan amendment, to get to the zoning code, those aren't going to be tasks at all to sit there and figure out the zoning classifications of where they might go or what may be allowed and all those kind of things. So, you know, it's all part of that process and where the hearings take you, honestly.
Thank you. Another question I was going to ask is, I notice there's no microphones out tonight, is there?
I don't have any attachments, we attach them to the stands, people have broke them.
Oh.
In the process of trying to find them.
Okay. One of the things that I was going to ask, is there a spot on the website that has a record of the resolutions that are currently in effect? Is, a lot of times you guys are voting on resolutions, but then there doesn't seem to be any spot where we can look those up.
They should be on there, I'll get Jessica.
Okay, so is that?
I think it's, I think all the resolutions ordinance on, right? Your question about which ones are or are not in a force?
Well, I know that they're not, they don't have the force of law. They're not an ordinance.
Yeah, they're not all.
They're, some of them are, yes, more of an agreement that, like the disability one is, it's, this is what we want to do.
Yeah, they, they, they need to be on there and I will make sure that they get that.
Yeah, okay. And is there a deadline for the law enforcement survey?
I don't think we set a deadline. We didn't set a deadline.
Okay.
I wouldn't think two years. Probably a little sooner than two years. Yeah, a little sooner than Christmas, maybe.
That's all the questions I have.
Joel?
Ah, I bet you think I'm going to talk about Swinier Park, but I'm not. But except to say that these folks have all got valid complaints. I've talked to you about it before. And looking through Deer Park ordinances the other day, specifically, I happened to look at the firearms ordinance. And it appears that the ordinance making City Hall gun-free zone is based on the existence of a courtroom and judicial proceedings. And it also mirrors the state WAC, which says the same thing. So what I wonder is, in light of the fact that that no longer happens here, is the gun-free zone still valid and enforceable? Or does the council need to look at that? Chuck?
I'm looking. Council with an E L is looking.
Right.
And I think you're right. You know, there's a lot of things, if this is the 9/12 firearms. Yeah, the area, Deer Park building, look there. Yeah, it is based on courtroom, jury room, judges' chambers for court business. Yeah, let's see, this was last amended in '09, 1989. So, you know, it's a bit of a, and I have clients that do this. They want to go marching down each title and bring them up to date. But you can probably find where it's against the law to spit on a sidewalk in some communities still. And I don't think anybody's going to hand out any citations for that, you know, just. So it's obviously going to be trumped by what the actual law is because we can pass all the little local ordinances we want. But if, if it's not against the law, I mean, because we don't use this as a courtroom facility anymore. So there are different regulations.
Yeah, but you could still, and I affirm support of the Second Amendment, but not in an absolute sense. So what I'm saying is that's something the city may want to look at. Rather than let it just hang out.
Should we make a motion, Chuck?
Oh, no, please don't. Careful what you ask for, I guess. You know, you know, we can. You're not alone. There's lots of jurisdictions have the same thing. It's like, what did you do before, you know, when I was here? A lot of things, I've looked at your code and it looks like, well, that looks like a really good ordinance for Tacoma, but it's in Deer Park. Because it just, it seemed like something that somebody thought was good and they had documents in there and I don't know if we followed or not and I'd have to go through and find it for you. But you're not the only city we represent and I, many smaller jurisdictions have many more issues like that, that somebody decided was good. And then they, and the thing of, to follow up on what Richie said is, resolutions are difficult to find if you don't stack them up somewhere on your website. Ordinance is, everything's there for everybody to see because you go with the code and we use the code reviser and almost everybody does that now. And you can go to the ordinance table and you can find it all and you can find the history. But you could certainly, I guess what I would do is mull it over at budget time. Is it worth setting aside an amount of money to have legal counsel go through your code, title by title, and just come back with, here's, here's the new version of this title? And then clean some of these things up. And I've, you know, I've done it for other jurisdictions. Happy to do it, it's not the world's most exciting work. It's a bit tedious, but it can be done.
It could be big money too.
And it can cost lots of money.
So you enjoy it and you're going to offer us the discount?
Well, it, like I said, it's a little, I decided not to. Well, it, it, like I said, it's a little, I decided not to be a dentist and I'm a lawyer. So I hope I didn't offend anybody in the audience. But yeah, I just, seriously, it, it's, I think we could probably do better, but it's, it is a matter of budgeting because, and I've said this before and I'll say it here is that a lot of clients, and I don't think I'm offending any others, but this city, this city does an absolute bolo to work with fewer people than any jurisdiction I'm aware of. So you're very cost conscious. I want to make sure that, you know, we don't stray too far away from that. But it wouldn't be unreasonable to budget in addition to what you normally spend in legal to, to take a look at some of those things. I, I am a resource because I've been doing this for so long and I, I would be happy to do that myself if, if you wanted it.
Joe, I get no idea.
I'm getting excited.
But I don't know. I'm not, you see, I'm not pleading to do the work, you know, but it's, it does need to be done and.
It's just a couple of lines, right?
Something like this, Chuck, I mean, and I look back on the fireworks ordinance changes. Please don't be throwing anything at me. It's, it seems like what could happen here if the council decided to, the council looked and said, oh, this is unenforceable. Somebody's going to complain about it sooner or later. They could, they could, if they decided, they could come up with a new ordinance, you would look at it to make sure it was legal and just replace the one you got. Takes a year for it to take effect, but there you go. And it doesn't cost as much, I'm sure.
Well, I, my suggestion, rather than taking up council all the council's time, it's a little bit like the committee that's looking at the building situation. If people have a passion for that, if there's one or two council members, you know, I could work small committee with them and, and we could just all of a sudden at a council meeting, showing up on the consent agenda would be the revision to Title I. We're not going to, you don't want to spend three hours redlining and going through and all that because if there's things that need to be fixed, they need to be fixed. I mean, you, you have things that you're still doing that are tradition in Deer Park that are not permitted to be done by state law. And I've talked about changing some of those, but it's, we'll just change them when we have to because it's working now.
Good job?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Thanks, Joe.
I don't know what kind of joke that was.
Okay, Richard?
Thank you all for coming.